Welcome everyone to the July 22, 2021 Board of Library Trustees. I'd like to start the meeting with the, well, first call to order and then ask Francesca to call the role, please.
Yes, Vice Chair Felguth.
Present.
Trustee Joshi.
Present.
Trustee Moreau.
Present.
Trustee Petty.
Eric.
And Chair Thompson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Francesca. And the next item on our agenda is a couple of very nice presentations. The first one will be from President Diane Ormeier of the Friends Foundation. And before she starts, I would just like to thank both she and Doug Holtzman that worked tremendously hard the last couple of years to transition the Friends of the Monterey Public Library into the Friends and Foundation of the Monterey Public Library. There was a lot of detailed work as well as major overtures to a lot of different people, and I think it's been a great success. And I attribute a lot of that to Diane's great work. So with that introduction, Diane's going to, I think, give us a little bit of an update on the activities over the past year while she's been present and maybe some future plans as well. So please, Diana, your floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Jim, and thank you for all the work in that transition. It's been a process and it seems to have gone very smoothly and we are in our groove now. So this year has been an interesting year for all of us, obviously, and and no less for the Friends. So we were proud to have been able to bring something at least monthly, whether it's a book sale or MC Gives or State of the Library. There was always something going on to put us in front of the community, which has been nice to keep up, especially when a lot of people weren't weren't able to see our faces out there. So so the, in the last year, we just finished our fiscal year. So the Friends were able to raise over $150,000. Fifty of that was MC Gives, but we have had a very good year, thanks in large part to Mary Jane and to Bill and his Fund Development Committee, because the Monterey Learns campaign has already blown past its original $200,000 goal and we reset the goal to aim to raise 300,000 by the time the campaign completes in February. And that might be ambitious. I'm sure Mary Jane will speak to that better than I can, but but for sure, we hit our best prospects hardest at the beginning and people were very generous last year, given given the challenges. So this, this last hundred thousand might be a tough slog, but we're going to try. We're going to try. So some of the things that the Friends have been doing, we had, we were only able to hold one remote author's event, but we have four or five different authors lined up and everybody wants to wants to do these live. They're kind of over Zoom and it's a much more spontaneous and collaborative thing if they're able to meet their audience face to face and they're able to sign books and sell books and all of that schmoozing too. So so we are hoping to get a series together when, as soon as we're able to to get some dates on the calendar. The, one of the new benefits of becoming a Friend that we haven't gotten started yet, but we will be introducing insider tours. So we'll be inviting Friends in. We're going to try to do them quarterly. They'll get a general tour of the library and, you know, told about its history and and all the different programs and all of that, but each one will also have a theme. And we'd like the first one to be for new Friends. So they are, get a little bit of an orientation about the organization and get told about some volunteer opportunities and maybe find some new leadership or active active members out of the new crop of members. So Friends, we expanded ship drive. It's not really membership, but the renewal of Friends. We expanded our mailing to include lapsed people who had fallen off in the last few years. So we reached back as far as 2017 and sent out quite a few more letters. So we were able to recapture quite a few. It's still a small group, but it's not trivial. We have 150 total members, which includes our legacy members, the 1849 lifetime friends. But we feel good about that and it was a good campaign and good response to it. So one of the, another thing that we put together that was sort of a because of the moment we find ourselves in, trying to figure out how as a Friends organization, we could support our library and all other local Friends organizations are facing the same challenges. They don't, they're either going dormant or throwing up their hands, not knowing what they can do and, you know, so so to keep keep the memberships engaged, but also to be as supportive to the library as possible. We did have a collaboration with other Friends organizations in the area from Santa Cruz all the way around the Bay of Pacific Grove. And there weren't a lot of us, but it's the beginning of some networking that hopefully will carry on in the future. We plan to have another one this fall to, because now with the reopening, there will be another year of transition, just a little different than this last challenging year was. And speaking of challenges, we have the things ahead of us that we haven't been real great at, but we are hoping to get better. As we started a program with the Chocolate and Wine Event called Let's Learn and they are, it was donated workshops that were virtual that were donated by local businesses and we we solicited a whole bunch of them, but we have not sold much of anything. So that is, that's on our plate to figure out what to do with it. And then the other big challenge we have is that for years, we've tried to get some air under our wings as far as social media and we haven't been too successful there, but but those are, those are the things we are hoping to get better at over the next month and year, months and year. And so that's about all we have going on, but for you, I had, I did have a question. I came to speak with you in October and then again now in July. Is that something that's gone on in the past?
Actually, I'm not sure. Maybe Inga or Bob could respond to that better than I could.
So we have tried once a year to have the president of the Friends speak to us, but it hasn't been a consistent time slot. So I'm not sure if there's a better time, if that might be part of your question. If you, we could have waited until October, then we'd have a brand new president speak, but they might not have the, all the context that you had. So
Right. Well, and that was sort of why I was asking if it was twice a year, it would probably be better if it were January and July. Because when I came to you in October, I had been president for eight days. And I was probably bluffing. I don't know what we talked about, but but I had, I had plans and ambitions, but not enough behind me to have really offered you much. So that might, you know, as officers change, that might be pushing it a little bit. So I would, if it were once a year, I'd wait to January. If it were twice a year, I'd go January and July.
Hey, those are great suggestions. I appreciate it.
And then I did have one other was that I'd like for the Friends to convene the board to convene a small group to, you know, for just a couple of emails, maybe one Zoom to do a SWOT analysis. The strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. And I'd like it to be somebody who isn't too close or have too much history. So and I was hoping that maybe one of the trustees would join us in something like that. It would only be a couple of meetings, but to just to take a stand back view of what we're doing well and what we could do better. And so you can discuss that amongst yourselves. It's just a thought for right now.
Okay, very good. Were you looking for one or two trustees?
I think just one.
Just one, okay.
I think just one, yeah. And I think it would be among the board. It would be people who haven't been with us too long, that don't have too much history of how things have been in the past, might have a fresher, fresher look at their impressions of what we're doing.
Do we have any volunteers while we're on this subject, especially of our newer members? We can talk about this more later and get back to you.
Okay.
Well, before I, before I ask if any of the trustees have any questions for Diane, I also wanted to acknowledge Harish as our liaison or advisor, whatever the right term is to the Friends and Foundation. And is there anything you would like to add, Harish, before we open it up for any questions anyone might have for Diane?
I don't think I mentioned this, but Marsha is also the alternate for this. So what I've decided is I think it's best for us to alternate. She won't be able to make the next meeting. So I'll do the next meeting and then perhaps she can do the other one. And that way we both stay connected and we're both known to the Friends and Foundation that way.
Very good, very good. So do any of the trustees have any questions for either Diane or Harish? Bob?
Diane, could you say a little bit more about the, was it Learn to Learn? Or the program you said you had solicited businesses for assistance?
Right. Let's Learn. Yes, it's a, it's on the website, so you can look at more of it there, but there are probably 20 plus different businesses who have donated virtual classes and they may be, there's one on family history. There's one that's yoga. There's Tai Chi. There's
Okay, all right, yeah.
Yeah. And so they can, they actually buy them through PayPal, through our website and then
Who buys them?
Anybody who wants to.
The participant buys them.
Right. The participant buys it at a discount from what the business would be charging. So we were able to offer it at a little bit less and they've donated it to us. So we have this treasure trove of pledges, but nothing has much.
So a bunch of businesses have donated programs that they have available commercially, but if somebody finds out about them available through the library, then they can get the same thing, but at a reduced rate.
Right.
Because then we get whatever the fee was since the program was donated by the business.
Right, exactly. So it's okay, the intention was to help promote the businesses. This was when we were pretty locked down. And so there's, you know, there's a little bit of maybe the moment has passed and people are tired of Zoom and would rather take an in-person class. But most of these businesses, if they've gone back to in-person, it can be in-person. So there's still some potential. We haven't quite called it dead yet.
And I would just clarify, Bob, that this is a fundraiser that the Friends are doing. So the money actually goes to the Friends and Foundation. And then of course, Friends and Foundation make donations to the library.
Right.
And since we're talking about it and this is being televised, we should mention the website that people can go to to learn more about it. So Diane, why don't you tell us what that URL is?
Okay, it's www.investinmpl.org.
Very good. Marsha, did you have a question?
Yeah, I read about the new campaign committee. I can't remember what the full name of that committee is.
Monterey Learns.
The Campaign Committee that Bill Wachowski set up.
Is it the honorary committee that you referred to?
The honorary, yeah. And I just wondered how that fits in to everything else, exactly how they work together with everybody.
I wonder if Mary Jane could speak to this. It's hot off the presses and we haven't had a meeting since that just formed.
Sure. This was a strategy that Bill and Inga and I discussed as a way of, as Diane said a minute ago, putting a little extra wind beneath our wings and giving us a little bit of momentum, simply from the concept was of identifying people who were very well-known, very well-respected, if not loved, and real luminary's of the peninsula. We, the strategy also was to make it easy, to make it difficult for them to say no. So we were absolutely clear from the beginning that there were no meetings involved, that they did not need to increase their giving, though we were very grateful that they were donors and hope they would continue to give, and that we were not going to ask them to ask anyone else to make a gift. All we wanted was their names. And then we started with what we thought were the easiest yeses and got a little momentum going. And yeah, the piece de resistance was that Bill was, Bill phoned up the Panettas and I spoke to staff there, but given Sylvia's work with literacy on the peninsula and, you know, I think the other idea is it's pretty, we don't have a lot of fundraising prowess, but we have such a beautiful brand and I think are so beloved that we were counting on, counting on that to help get us over the finish line. So I think I had heard that someone had wanted us to just quickly read the names of the people involved. So Joanne and Dan Albert Senior, Ted Bellistriery of the Canary Row Company, Kip and Jay Hudson, Fred and Phyllis Muir, Leon and Sylvia Panetta, Ann Parker and Jan Lusso, and Chris Shake. So we got some really lovely notes back from the people that we, you know, they're feeling good about having given us their names. So it also does position us to be able to talk to some of them about gifts if we see the strategy and it's not, doesn't go against our pledge that we were not going to ask them outright for gifts.
Well, thank you. And also thank the honorary members of that committee. Appreciate their cooperation and assistance in our efforts. Are there any other questions for Diane? If not, I just wanted to thank you once again for all your work and that of your board and your Fund Development Committee. It's been truly instrumental this past year when the city funding has been so limited. It's always wonderful, but it's been particularly instrumental this year. So please convey our heartfelt thank you to the entire Board of Directors of the Friends and Foundation and particularly the Fund Development Committee and Bill Wachowski also.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. And Diane, you are welcome to continue attending our meeting, but if you have other things you need to do, we will certainly understand if you disappear from the screen. Now leave it at your option.
I will hang around for a little while because I find this interesting, but I may duck out.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Thank you. And our next item is also a very nice item to recognize Kim Smith for 15 years with the Monterey Public Library. And I'd like to ask Inga to do the honors in terms of recognizing Kim.
Sure. So it's really hard to believe that Kim Smith has actually been with us for 15 years. So we want to have the Board of Trustees recognize Kim for her service to the Monterey Public Library and to the City of Monterey and have the following remarks read into the minutes. So Kim Smith joined Monterey Public Library as a reference librarian in June of 2006. She came to us with a background in book selling and with library experience in reference, technology, cataloging, and acquisition services. This background would serve us well. "I enjoy challenges and feel that I'm quick to learn new things and adapt to new situations," Kim wrote in her cover letter. Little did Kim realize what exciting challenges lay ahead. So during her first year at Monterey Public Library, Kim worked the Reference Services Desk and was cross-trained. And I know we all really want everybody to be cross-trained, but she was cross-trained to assist in youth services as well. She is quick and competent and will soon adapt at providing reference service to customers of all ages. Kim has since helped MPL customers and colleagues through numerous software transitions and new products. Because she's very good at helping people with technology as well as general reference questions. Starting in 2007, Kim helped the library join the world of social media with Flickr and then Facebook. Kim has served on the library's web team since 2007 and has helped streamline menus and declutter pages. She's always looking for new ways to enhance customers' web-based learning experience. During the past 15 years, Kim has made important contributions to library programming. She launched MPL's first adult summer reading program in 2007. It's hard to believe we didn't always do adult summer reading, but it used to be before Kim came along, we really just focused on kids and teens. Now it's in its 14th year and the adult SRP has had an enthusiastic following. During the past two years, Kim has been the lead in coordinating summer reading for all ages, quickly transitioning our program to a virtual environment and implementing Beanstack, an online system for logging reading time and earning prizes. And if you haven't made an account in Beanstack and signed up, it's a lot of fun and there's still time through the end of the month to join the summer reading program and log some summer hours and be eligible for some prizes. So let's see, this year, Kim set up a Books2Go collection at three city preschools so that kids who might not be able to come to our sidewalk service can still participate in summer reading. One of Kim's biggest contributions to MPL, however, has been in the area of collection development. Selection responsibilities including tracking and purchasing popular materials, monitoring and adding copies of high-demand titles, filling in collection gaps, responding promptly to customer suggestions, replacing lost, missing, or damaged items, weeding worn and outdated items, and deciding whether or not and when to add donated materials. All of this used to be done by a big team of librarians, 10 people, I think, when I, when I came, including the library director. The library director was selecting, I think, adult fiction. The assistant library director was selecting science fiction. So we had it all distributed out to all these different staff members. Well, so when Kim first joined us, yep, we had 10 full-time people and she is so efficient and decisive and dialed in to popular culture that over time she became the sole selector of adult and teen materials. And in 2012, she took over ebook selection, first just for us and then for Pacific Grove Public Library, and then eventually for the Northern California Digital Libraries Consortium. So any of you who downloaded ebooks from Overdrive may have been downloading things that she selected because she was selecting for that whole consortium group. Now it's transferred on to somebody else, but she was doing that for quite a while. In August of 2017, Kim became the Library Manager for Technology, Readers, and Technical Services. And in 2019, Reference Services and Public Desk Coordination were added to her list of responsibilities. In June 2020, Kim was to navigate really the biggest challenge of her career. She was laid off as library manager due to COVID-19 budget reductions, but then was rehired as a librarian, one of four full-time positions that remained in the library. Kim's fearless, can-do approach to setbacks has kept the library moving forward during a during a year of uncertainties and challenges. As a member of the city's Safety Committee, Kim has made sure that library and museum staff and volunteers have remained up to date and in compliance with the changing safety and workplace protocols that we have faced through this pandemic year. Kim was rehired, I'm so glad to say, as Library Manager effective July 1, 2012, 2021. And, um, she will be managing public service, including programming for all ages, reference service, Bookmobile service, the public desk, and building maintenance. Kim, and already when she submits the work orders, people come and do the work. It's, it's really impressive. Um, Kim has a lot on her plate, but she has proved time and time again over the past 15 years that she's up for the challenge. So please join me in thanking Kim for 15 years of service to the city and the library. We look forward to many, many more years to come.
Very good. Do any other trustees want, or do any trustees want to add any comments? Yes, Jennifer.
Congratulations. Having worked in that library when we were fully staffed with all these program managers, my hat is off to you. I managed the Bookmobile one program and it was so much on my plate. So the fact that you can juggle all of this, lady, you rule.
Very good. And Marcia.
Because I was just wondering what you're going to do with all the extra time that you have with all. Yeah. Is it possible to do all those things? I mean, can you manage to, are you doing them all now? You're doing them all?
It's, it's a challenge. I think I'm pretty good at recognizing what the most important things are, the things that people are going to notice. And then the things that maybe can slide by and maybe you do a little bit, you know, maybe it's a couple of days past due, but nobody notices, but you know, that's how you juggle things.
Bob, did you want to add something?
Yeah, uh, I was just gonna say that, uh, Kim, it appears to me like you've set the bar awfully high for yourself. It's going to be hard to, uh, you know, accomplish even more than, uh, your record so far. But we are looking forward to that, uh, possibility. And, um, maybe along those lines, I was wondering, are you prepared for the next, uh, plumbing problem with the toilet upstairs?
Oh, I'm dreading that. I can't wait until Inga's like, oh, Kim.
Well, I, I would just like to add, uh, Kim, that I'm sorry this past year was so bumpy, particularly being laid off and everything. I know that's a very traumatic, difficult, frustrating process and situation. And we're so thankful to have you back as a full-time manager and congratulations. And, uh, would you like to say anything, uh, while we're on this item and speaking of yourself?
Just, I'm excited to be back in a manager role. Um, I've got some new areas to learn. I think I've done probably everything, just a little bit of everything in this building. Um, so I have some new stuff because I haven't done as much with programs and youth services in the past. So this will be, um, exciting. So then, you know, get my full, well-rounded, um, managerial role, a little bit of everything. So thank you, everybody.
Very good. Well, thank you. And thank you not only for what you're about to do and have been doing, but for the last 15 years. That's quite a ride. Very good. Thank you. Well, if nothing else on that item, then let's move on to the Consent Calendar, which today consists of Items 3 and 4, with Item 3 being the minutes from the June 24 meeting and Item 4 being a request, request for an appropriation of donated funds. And I think, um, first I'll ask if there are any trustee questions for, of clarification about either Item 3 or 4, then see if there's any public, uh, comment, and then we can take, uh, action on, on the consent agenda. So first of all, does anybody have any clarifying questions or want to pull either Item 3 or 4 off of the consent calendar? Seeing none, um, Francesca, I wondered if you could give the, um, announcement of how the public can comment if they'd like to comment. And then we'll see if there are any comments on Items 3 or 4, and maybe you could also ask if there are any public comments while you're at it.
Yes, I would be happy to. We encourage members of the public to join our meeting via Zoom Gov, a secure service for use by government agencies. You will be connected live in real time to the meeting. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmontreal with an approximate 10-second delay and on Comcast Channel 25 with up to a 90-second delay. If you do plan to make a comment, please join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone and ensure you join in time to accommodate the delay. To join the meeting on Zoom, use the link or phone number on the Library Board of Trustees Agenda at isearchmonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial toll-free 833-568-8864, enter meeting ID 1613528864, followed by the pound sign. If prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a comment, please raise your Zoom hand, or if you are connected by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. For anyone who would like to make a comment on either the consent agenda or the first two items, or a public comment, you may do so now. And Chair Thompson, there are no public comments at this time or comments on the consent item.
Okay. Thank you very much, Francesca. Then, uh, any discussion about Item 3 or 4, or is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve a second.
So Jennifer makes the motion and Marcia seconds to approve Items 3 and 4 on the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? If not, Francesca, could you call the roll?
Trustee Joshi. Trustee Maro.
Yes.
Trustee Patty.
Aye.
Vice Chair Felguth.
Yes.
And Chair Thompson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on their, on our agenda is the Public Apparents section of the agenda, which includes Item 5 through 10. And we'll start off with Item Number 5, which is to receive an update on the library reopening. And I think Inga has some very good news to report. Oh, you, you're muted, Inga.
Okay, sorry. I do have wonderful news. I sent out an email earlier today to staff and trustees, letting you know that we have decided to reopen the library on Tuesday, July 27. And that will be at 10:00 AM. And our new schedule will be Tuesdays through Saturdays, 10 to 6. And we will continue, uh, with curbside service from 10 to noon on Tuesdays through Saturdays. And so we, um, just figured there were enough things that had fallen into place to make it, and that the public has been asking daily, when are you going to reopen? When are you going to reopen? It's their library. There were enough things in place that we thought we're just going to do it. And, um, still a few glitches to work out, but nothing that would prevent us from, um, allowing the public to come in safely to the building. So that's the big exciting news. Um, one of the things that we're going to be really firm about from the start is, um, well, we want to make sure that people understand that, um, their safety and our staff safety is our number one priority. And so masks are going to be required whether or not a person has been vaccinated. And, um, we, that is partly because we serve children. Children are such a big part of our constituents and MPUSD is following the state in requiring that all of their students and teachers wear masks. And also, as we know from earlier this week, with, um, the County Health Department issued a recommendation that we go back to having masks worn by everyone when we're indoors. So that's, uh, one requirement that we're going to expect of everyone. And for those who choose not to wear masks or for some reason are not able to wear masks, we still have sidewalk service, so that's an option for them. And we understand that other libraries in the area are, um, have similar policies. So we're not alone in this. Um, also for people's safety, I just thought it's good to know that, um, we did have our air ventilation system fully checked out and, um, the amount of outside air that is in, taken in has been increased, um, by the, um, heating and cooling company that services are building. And also they put in air filters that are at the highest level for the system that we have. So that's good to know. And also we of course have a lot of windows and the plan is to open all our windows when we're open to the public. So there's lots of good, uh, fresh air coming into the building. Um, we also have stationed, thanks to Kim Smith, we've stationed hand sanitizer and, um, disinfectant wipes throughout the building. So those are available. Um, if a person forgets their mask, we have masks that, um, as supplies last, we can hand out. And, uh, let's see, we've removed, uh, the number of chairs that we typically have available for seating and also the number of computers that we typically have available just to help people spread out and so that people aren't too crowded up against people that aren't part of their family unit. And, um, we are not going to be having in-person programs initially. We will be continuing, uh, virtual programs and then we'll have some outdoor programs. Our very first outdoor program, um, to help celebrate summer and also to, uh, let people know that our Bookmobile is coming back is going to be this Saturday at the Montecito Park. And it's a summer reading samba party with James Henry. And it's going to be a lot of fun and everybody is invited to the samba party this Saturday at 2:30. Let's see what else. Uh, so because, uh, we're, we're going to be having to gradually phase things in. We know that we're gradually phasing in staffing. We're gradually phasing in the days of the week and the hours that we're open. We're also, um, because our funding is being gradually phased in and, uh, we are not going to be offering, uh, public meeting rooms at this time. So that's on pause as well. So that's a service that I know people have been asking us about because of course they have groups that are tired of meeting virtually that want to meet, um, in person, but we're not going to be able to offer that service, um, right off the bat either. And, yeah. So, uh, please ask questions about the status of various things. Um, uh, we're, uh, all the staff are scrambling to get everything ready.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that excellent overview and the good news, uh, Inga. Marcia, I think has the first question.
It's just a, it's just a small one, but is the city providing the masks and the hand sanitizer? And will they come in and change it? Or is this, this is something the library has to do?
So at, uh, one point during the pandemic, the city, uh, did some centralized buying and they were purchasing all the hand sanitizer and wipes and PPE, as they call it, um, for the entire city. Uh, but that was phased out, uh, when they, uh, phased out the emergency response, uh, office that had been called into action. And so now each department is responsible for the cost of their own supplies.
Okay. So, so it's a, it's a line item in the library budget somewhere, out of supplies.
Correct, correct. I mean, the city is supplying custodial support, which is great. I mean, something we had before, but during the pandemic, we've had, uh, that been significantly reduced because of course the foot traffic in the building had been significantly reduced.
Well, where, so they'll boost it back up again to the.
Right. So we'll have a custodian that comes in and does cleaning twice a day and our public restrooms will be open, but it's with the understanding that they are cleaned twice a day and, and it's up to each individual to decide if they want to use the public restroom or not.
Other trustee questions?
Looks like Bob has a question.
Yeah, I thought Bob had a question. Is that right?
Yeah, um, I have a question and a, and a request actually. The, uh, question is on the flyer that you sent out, uh, which looks very good. Um, it says, "Programs remain online or outdoors." Uh, could you expand on what outdoors means?
Sure. So we are starting off with this, uh, Bookmobile program at Montecito Park that I mentioned that is outdoors, uh, at the park. And then starting in August, we're going to be having children's storytime on, uh, Colton Hall Lawn. And also in August, we're having a group, Cascada de Flores, that is a children's primarily, well, it's a bilingual, family-friendly, um, group of performers, uh, sing and tell stories. And they're going to be on Colton Hall Lawn as well. So by outdoors, we mean, um, giving enough space so that people can be adequately distanced from one another and so forth.
The reason I asked that, and I was assuming that you meant a lot of sit on the grass around, uh, you know, a, a presenter for the kids and everything. Like Diane said earlier, um, the, I guess it was the authors, they were expressing, uh, preference, she said live, I think she meant in person, uh, because Zoom is live, but I think she meant the authors were, uh, expressing a preference for doing things in person. And I'm sure despite the popularity of the remote adult programs that, uh, thanks in large part to Francesca and the, let's learn, um, that we are offering and they're very successful and, and, and quite good. Uh, I'm sure there are a lot of people, especially now that things are opening up a little bit, might like to come to something that is in person. And since we're not going to be correctly, not doing it indoors, I was sitting here wondering, and I'd be happy to help work on this with staff, could we organize some outdoor programs for, um, adults? And I mean, I was thinking something as simple as setting up chairs in the parking lot and having people sit plenty spacious away. There could be a presenter, just as if it was in the community room, but it's outside. And, um, you know, there are these portable, um, AV-like systems where it's just a small speaker only intended to project to shortways, or even the ones that sometimes tour guides wear. You know, they have this like box around their front and they have a little microphone. Um, I don't know if we own one of those yet or not, but a, a very small AV kind of setup and present some short talks, um, for adults outdoors. Not Colton Hall sit on the ground with the kids, but maybe in a, uh, setup like that. So ju- just a thought that I had that I don't know if anybody else is doing that and it wouldn't hurt for us to be innovative.
Sure. So that's certainly, uh, worth considering. I did, uh, purchase one of those wireless headsets and, um, and, uh, speakers that a person can wear either on their belt or around their neck uh, for the outdoor, uh, children's storytelling programs that we're planning. So that could be used by adults as well.
Yeah, sure.
I've mentioned in terms of outdoor programming that the Friends and Foundation are planning to do, um, some more book sales coming up that will be outdoors on our back patio. And they were able to do that during, um, previous months and, uh, people really enjoyed that. So we'll do some more of those too.
Well, maybe a, a program of some sort for a short period of time could piggyback onto the book sale and one might, you know, help draw people to the other.
Yeah, that's a possibility.
And the request I was going to make is, uh, looking at this flyer that you sent out today and as you emphasize the, uh, uh, extreme importance of making sure everybody wears a mask, uh, inside, not just when they walk in and then they whip it off, but, uh, anytime they're at the library. I was going to ask if that, it's a lovely picture, but could you change the first picture there of the, I assume, mother and the two kids? It's a great picture, but put one there with people wearing masks. Uh, in the short term. So their, you know, their body language will show that they're happy to be there, but until we change the requirement, make it one with masks.
Good suggestion. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Bob. Any other, any other questions for Inga about the reopening? I do have one question. Um, I wondered, it's particularly for the public, uh, Inga, if you could describe a little bit more how the sidewalk service will function after, uh, we reopen the regular library. It'll be relocated, I know.
Yes, it will. So, uh, we have another. Yes, it will. So we have another desk on, I'm sorry, another door on Pacific Street. So right now people are used to coming along the sidewalk on Pacific Street to our main entrance. And that's where they've been, we've been offering the sidewalk service. So there's another door on Pacific Street that is a staff door that's closer to the edge of the building where there's a bench actually and the driveway. So at that door, we're going to use the same partition that we've been using at the front door. It's plexiglass and it fits into a standard door size. It has a speaker and it has a gap. And we'll have a staff on one side who will actually be seated at a desk back there. But when the doorbell rings, we'll be able to have that staff member approach the door, find out what the customer wants to pick up. And then we'll have a, David set up a cart that has a laptop and an RFID pad and a scanner. And we'll use that to scan the customer's library card. We'll go into the main part of the library to pick up the hold for the customer and then walk it back to that door. So there will be a little bit of a delay in terms of how quickly the hold items can be pulled from the hold shelf and brought to the customer. But I heard from a staff member that when they used another library in our area, there was a nine-minute wait, I think. And we think we'll be able to do better than nine minutes. That's the process. And then what we won't be able to do for customers is we won't be able to, if they're not sure what they would like to borrow and they have a general interest of maybe they want a new mystery or lengthy audiobook for a road trip. For those kinds of questions where they haven't quite decided on a specific author or title, then we'll recommend that those be conveyed as an email or as a phone message or by placing the hold in the computer. And then the item can be pulled that way as opposed to a staff member going off and browsing the shelves and bringing some selections back and having a back and forth with the customer. Because we won't have that staffing capacity.
Understood. Okay, very good. Any other trustee questions on this item?
I should have mentioned something else about reopening, which I hadn't included, which is opening the bookmobile. So when we talk about reopening the library, most of the time I have the bookmobile in mind too, because the bookmobile is part of the library. But we do have opening dates for the bookmobile. The bookmobile will be going out on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And that's going to start on the first Tuesday in August.
Very good. That's wonderful to hear as well.
Oh, and maybe I could make a final comment. So normally you would think on our website, this is going to be the huge, in a big banner on our website, library reopening and the reopening date. And the challenge for us right now is that we are in the midst of switching from one vendor to another for our website. And the former vendor has locked out our ability to update the website. So we're not able to change any of the language on the website at this time. So we're hoping that this is just going to be for a few weeks. But unfortunately, when people go to our website, they won't see that we've reopened.
But just to add to that, but we are doing quite a few things to publicize the reopening, correct?
Correct. So we're sending out a press release. We're with our communications office, the city's communications office. We've asked them to also put out the word on their social media and we'll be using social media as well. So there are a number of ways that we'll try to get the word out.
Very good, very good. Well, thank you very much and thank you and all the staff for all the work that's gone into figuring out how to reopen. Because I, it's, it'll be a completely different process in many respects and a lot of challenges with very limited staffing. So thank you very much for all the work that's gone into getting us as far as we have. And related to that, of course, is our next item on the agenda, item six, which is an update on the NetHawk RFID Committee, because the RFID Committee, as we all know, was very instrumental in allowing us to reopen with the limited staff that we will have. So could we have a little bit of an update on that, Inga and Harish?
Sure. So we had our installation of the final pieces last week. We had our gates installed, security gates installed and tested. We had our, our patron app tested out and our patron app is very basic, but it does work. You're going to be able to find this app on the Apple web, Apple app site or the Google app site and download it onto your smart device. And then you'll be able to walk in the library, scan the barcode with your phone's camera and then check out an item yourself and walk out of the building with it. So that is tested out and it works. And our self-checks are now up and running. And let's see, our, our desk is set up. And Harish was here last week during the installation, making sure it all went smoothly and chatting with our installer. And so the one thing that we still have a little bit of a glitch about is the smart bin. So the smart bin is going to enable any, any items that get returned through our return slot inside the building will automatically be checked in once the smart bin is, is talking perfectly to Koha, which is our innovative library system. Right now, there's a little bit of a communication glitch, but it's not with our RFID company. It's between our bin and Koha. And so we're, we're working on getting that resolved, but it's not a big enough issue that it will prevent us from reopening.
Very good. Anything you'd like to add, Harish?
Yes, I would. I was there a week ago and I saw the testing going on. It was very reassuring. I saw David checking the books in and out and then Amelia running back and forth through the doors to make sure that they did get triggered as they were supposed to and not when they were not supposed to, checking out both the frames. So it was really nice to see all that happening. So I'm fairly confident that when we actually open, everything will happen smoothly because all the bugs have been weeded out by then.
Very good. And, and thank you.
If you do use the self-checkout, David mentioned this, there's a delay between the time it takes for the system to recognize that the, it doesn't neutralize a tag directly. So it has to go to the server and the server has to tell the gates that it's okay that books went checked out. So if you check the books out, don't walk out immediately. Give it a little time.
So does that mean we should set up a little obstacle course before you're able to actually exit? Any other trustee questions of Inga?
Yeah, just a, just a quick one. For, for that little glitch that Harish was talking about and also for how to set up your phone, are you going to have some job aids or posters or handouts or something for people? Particularly, I, I could picture the first day when everyone's checking out stuff, walking out the door and having the gates. So you, right, you gotta have some signage or something.
Yeah. So well, and Jennifer had the great question. Did the company that we purchased the system from already have some videos and that sort of stuff? Promotional materials already created? Unfortunately not. They didn't. So yeah, we're working on having some good signage and, and that sort of thing, instruction for people so that they can learn more about how to use the system.
Because I would imagine that people will, the first time, use the regular checkout system and then they'll see this thing about the phone and they'll standing there trying to download the app and then do everything without, they could pick up a piece of paper or something and and for the next time or something.
Yeah.
Good suggestion. Any other questions for Inga? Bob?
Is the, you said they use their smartphone and the barcode. Is it a QR code that's being read? Or is it a, this barcode that's been on the books forever or?
Barcode that's been on the books forever. And so you just take your cam, well, once you have the app, once you have the app on your phone, then it says borrow or something like that. And then you click that and then your camera opens up and you just line up your camera with the barcode and it takes a little picture and checks it out to you.
So it's like a QR code reader app, except it's a specific one for this system?
Yes.
So if I could piggyback on that, does that mean in the fut, in the future, we're going to continue to have the barcodes as well as the RFID tags on each book?
Yes. And that was always something that we were planning to do is have the barcode on there because the barcode is visible. So if we are, lose power, for instance, we can still write down the number of the barcode on, on the checkout, on the paper checkout slips.
Okay, very good. Any other trustee questions?
One quick, quick one. Will this work if I'm in the PG library also? Are we coordinating with them?
So we are coordinating in a small way. So they're very interested in converting to RFID. But they didn't have the wonderful situation we had, which is we had donor funds pay for this. And so in the meantime, we're helping them out by coding their and tagging and encoding the collection of materials that comes over from PG to us. But with the idea that eventually they'll purchase a system as well. And even if they don't go with the same company that we went with, the tags that we're putting in their materials will work.
Very good. If there are no other questions, I, I realize now that I forgot to ask for any public comment on item five. And since five and six are both related to the reopening in different ways, I'd like to ask Francesca to ask if there's any public comment on either item five or six. But it looked like Inga may want to say something first.
I did think of something, two things to quickly mention. One is that, that this whole reopening plan really was the work of our reopen, our planning committee. So a huge thanks to the planning committee that worked with me on the different phases of reopening and helped put that plan together. And then the second thing is I, I hadn't mentioned, which is fines. So fines are going to resume. And we had suspended fines during the pandemic during our closure. But fines for Monterey Public Library books and materials will resume in August. We're going to give people warning and then won't, won't have the fines begin until the 19th of August to get people back in the habit of really paying attention to when things are due and bringing them back on top.
Very good.
And Bob has a question.
Are you, in that, along with that, are you, you usually send an email a few days before saying, hey, get that book off the table and back at the library? And that reminder email, will you be able to add a sentence that says, and fines have been resumed? So it's going to cost you as well?
That's a good question. I'll see how we can edit that text.
I mean, just adding it, that'd be an easy way of reminding everybody, you know, a handful of days before, before they're in the, you know, on our UO's money list.
Right.
Good suggestion, Bob. Thank you.
I will mention that Pacific Grove feels strongly against fines, so they are not going to be resuming fines. And then this is something that will probably be a little confusing for our customers. So we'll take it one day at a time.
Very good. Okay, Francesca, could you ask if there's any public comment on either item five or six, please?
Yes. And as always, we do encourage members of the public to join our meeting via Zoom Gov. You will be connected live in real time to the meeting. To make a public comment on Zoom, please raise your hand. If you are connected by phone, dial star nine. There are no public comments at this time, Chair Thompson.
Thank you very much, Francesca. Then moving on to item number seven, which is a quarterly trust fund report. Inga, could you give us a little overview of that?
Sure. So you have the for you, the quarterly report that reports on our fourth quarter. And the starts out by showing you revenue that came in during the fourth quarter and year-to-date and expenditures during the fourth quarter and year-to-date. And our year-to-date revenue was quite significant, $235,191. And that's largely due to the hard work of our Friends and Foundation and our fund development coordinator. So huge thank you to that team. The trust fund balance, we continue to have a growing balance for bookmobile in the Aller Trust. And those funds are for replacement of a bookmobile. And then we have other trust fund monies and then our total equity. So we ended the fourth quarter with $609,930. As far as the next part of the report, so just to remind you, we have a trust fund budget each year where we've decided to spend some trust fund monies on specific things. And so we report on those expenditures and then we also report on monies that have come in. And then I think to me, the most, and then we say, of course, what the monies were spent on. But to me, always the most fascinating part of the report is the fund development portion of the report that says how well we're doing with our fundraising. And for that, I would like Mary Jane to walk us through that portion of the report. So my question then to you is, shall I pause at this point? Having gone quickly over the report up to packet page 19? Or shall we have Mary Jane take it over, starting with packet page 20, have her report? And then all questions can be.
Yeah, let, let's bifurcate it. I think that's a good suggestion. So before, before we get on to attachment, what is it, attachment? The first attachment, are there any questions from trustees about item, about pages, packet pages 16 or 17? Or 18 or 19? Seeing then, then let's move on to Mary Jane's summary of the activity report, which, and my compliments on the bottom line results of this are outstanding.
Yes, it was a banner quarter. As you can see from the little, little chart that summarizes funds that came in during the quarter to the Friends and Foundation, to the Endowment and to the trust fund in the categories of restricted and unrestricted. Because it's such a nice, healthy number, I refer you to the bullets on the following page, packet page 21. Certainly, the, this list of noteworthy gifts doesn't add up to the $49,000. But I wanted to give you an idea of what moved the needle to get to that big number. And in particular, $20,000 of it right off the top came from really two individual donors. The, the Defoe Fund at the Community Foundation of Monterey County. It was made by decision of the fund administrator. So it's really kind of like an individual gift as well. And the other examples I listed just to try to give you a little bit of a feel for the kinds of things that come across the transom or hand-delivered and come come through the door through Schwab and Fidelity. It's also a good time for me to thank all of you for your gifts, whether they came in in this quarter or not. Couple of you certainly did have gifts in this quarter and one of you has gifts in every quarter. He gives regularly. Thank you, Bob. Let's see. And then the spring analysis, I don't think it's all that interesting to walk through the details in a picky, yin way. But I'm happy to answer any questions. I, the response rate of 7.3% might not sound good, but it's very good for an annual fund. And the average gift size is stupendous for an annual fund. But I wanted to make a couple of comments to kind of put that in perspective. Because let's see, the, the kind of in the, the fund development operation at Monterey Public Library and the Friends and Foundation have been raising funds for a couple of decades. But it's mostly been a male appeal. funds for a couple of decades, but it's mostly been a male appeal. And there has been limited ability to get to know major, get to know Dana donors personally, even to meet them and to be able to develop those. So we have a program that's really heavily on the shoulders of the annual fund. And we have really just a very nascent major gifts program. That's just the earmarks of where we are right now. And so that explains in part, not to take the joy out of those good responses, but that kind of certainly explains the high average gift rate. And thank goodness that we have that strong response to our mail appeals because we really are, it's doing a lot of heavy lifting for the program right now. With the current resources and the resources I can envision being available to the program in the near term, in the coming year or so, it's really hard to imagine how we're going to pop up to the next balance or the next level of you, you don't microwave a major gifts program into place with a flick of the back to mix metaphors. So that's just, just some comments on the annual fund and to put that, those numbers into perspective. The turning to packet page twenty-two, where we have a short section on the bottom of that page and the following page about the campaign. As you can easily see, we've got the same summary that we've been using since the campaign started at the end of each quarter, when I prepare this report for Inga to include in the packet that breaks out the, breaks out the total for our campaign since September first. And this is, we call our campaign a comprehensive campaign, everything counts. And it breaks out the different flavors from Friends and Foundation, the Trust Fund, and the Endowment. See what I wanted to maybe mention there. Diane's discussed the, our increase in the goal. And I'm pretty, from two hundred thousand dollars to three hundred thousand dollars. And I'm pretty optimistic. I think it will, a lot of it will come down to our ability to pull a few major gifts over the finish line in the remaining months that we've got. And by pulling those gifts in, the, the, the people harnessed in that little team are Inga and Bill, most notably. With me as their Sherpa, trying to help them. I'm really just lavishly mixing metaphors, but that's how we will really get to that three hundred thousand goal. And one last comment on the and I, I'll just mention that on packet pages twenty-four and twenty-five, we just included the thinking that we'd done to prepare the Fund Development Committee for undertaking a decision about raising a goal. And to reassure you of the reasoning that was behind our decision and that we did not pull a number out of the air. And last, but certainly not least, are the revised, newly revised campaign giving opportunities that are in packet page twenty-six. And I will just mention that these, we call them revised because in September of twenty twenty, when we started the campaign, this list looked a little different. Had the Bookmobile on it, for example. So Inga recently revised these in the light of the city budget for twenty-one, twenty-two, and also in terms of what we have raised in contributed revenue and in some of what we think might be attractive to some of our donor base. The grand total of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I, I wanted to make, just to underscore that this, this list, this laundry list of giving opportunities for donors, it doesn't equate to the goal. It's, these are rubrics under which we hope we can entice people to invest in the, in the library and in the campaign. So and I think that's, I don't have anything else, maybe one last small comment about bookplates. Which is, I know, just a minor detail, but I wanted to note that we are really cognizant that we have skeleton staff and that we don't want to be offering bookplates even on request or willy nilly. We set an informal kind of unwritten policy, or maybe it is a a policy that's been written down among the staff. So there's a, we're willing to offer bookplates for gifts of at least five thousand dollars. And that these gifts, five thousand dollars for the collections and that they that this needs to be either an unrestricted gift to the collections or something very, 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 very broad. Because even though we're all very interested in World War II or in political science, even in very broad areas, we don't want to have to burden the staff with having to select particular books to be bookplated in a certain way. So we've done this twice, once to entice a donor and help him commit to a ten thousand dollar pledge. And we did it once because the donor required it when making a five thousand dollar gift. So that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that thorough report and for all the good news, Mary Jane. Any trustee comments on this item or any questions, I should say, before public comment?
You just had a question about the, the three hundred thousand dollar goal. So you're giving yourself six, based on this analysis, it looks like you're giving yourself six more months to raise half again of what is what you've done. Is that, so it's an eighteen month stretch, stretch goal? Okay. And then the question about the collection, is that a cumulative five thousand dollars or a one-time five thousand dollars for the bookplates?
Interesting question. I think I would need to talk to my library director to, actually, I think we'd probably discuss, learn more from the donor who wanted to do that. I mean, it certainly could be given in a couple of installments, I would think.
A one-time gift.
Did you want to add anything to that, Inga, or is that a topic for further discussion among the staff? Yeah, you're muted, Inga. You're muted, Inga.
Yes, I think further discussion among the staff, we certainly do have a small, gifts to the collection in smaller increments. And the issue is, of course, staff time. And so we have to be really careful about what we promise. And so, yeah, I think.
Either one time makes more sense.
Yeah, it does.
Any other questions? If not, Francesca, could we see if there's any public comment on this item?
Yes, for anyone who would like to make a public comment, please raise your Zoom hand. Or if connected by telephone, please dial star nine. Chair Thompson, there are no public comments.
Thank you, Francesca. Now that we, we've asked questions, are there any concluding comments any trustees have on this item? If not, I'd just like to commend Inga and Mary Jane and Bill Wachowski and everyone else that's been involved in this process. I think we're, compared to where we were a couple of years ago, when, when I first came on the board, I think we've made major headway. And in terms of that consultant report that we had, the name of which I currently forget, it seems like we've made major progress in implementing their recommendations. So thank you all. Moving on then to item number eight on our agenda, which is a quarterly report on the library director's work plan. And this is a fairly lengthy report covering a lot of different issues. And I think rather than asking Inga to go through in detail all of these items, maybe it would be more productive if we just ask for questions by trustees and maybe do it by the five sections that are listed here, like organizational excellence and digital strategy, learning and literacy, if we could go through those each one at a time and see if there are any clarifying questions that any trustees have. Then after we've gone through all five of those items, invite any public comment. And, and then after that, we'd have any general discussion the board may have. This is just an item to be received rather than any action. But still, I think that that process might make sense in this particular item. So unless you feel the need to make any overview comments, Inga, I thought I'd move right in and ask if there are any trustee clarification questions on the organizational excellence section of the report, which starts on packet page twenty-eight. Marsha?
Quick comment on that. I think you're under, under, on the, on the revenue generation. In some sense, it, it sounds like no work has been done on that, when in fact, you know, the ad hoc committee did a lot of work. So it, it almost feels like instead of saying nothing new to report, you could say, we, we put this thing to bed. I don't know how to say that, but to, you know, to, to comment on that work had been done and it's kind of kind of finished with that.
Which, which.
There were actually, so revenue generation. So I think that there was a committee that worked on that with me, the ad hoc committee. But there were some things that were on there that, that the library director was asked to continue to explore. And so one really good example that remains in my mind is passports. And, you know, that is something that other libraries have been able to generate revenue by providing passports. And it is something that at some point, we might be able to launch. We just don't have sufficient staff at this time. The, the nice things that have come together around this is that on our, in our city clerk's office, our assistant city clerk used to work in a library and that offered passport service and she was heavily involved with it. So we have her expertise. And then also Sarah Nolan has just returned from to the library after having been laid off. And she was the coordinator for passport service at a previous library. So, so we have some, you know, we have some expertise in the wings if, if we're able to look for more, look into that more in the future.
How about the printing? So you're starting up printing again. Will, will that, will that, that generate some revenue and nothing different than before or?
That does generate some revenue. And actually, when we get to exploring core technology needs, we are looking into and have now received funds from the Friends for an upgrade to our public printing system. And it would be possible to introduce services like fax and some other services like that, which, which would generate a little bit of revenue as well.
And if I could just add to that, because I was on that ad hoc revenue committee, there were some other, there, there were some issues that were put to bed, Marsha. But there were, in addition to the passport, there were, there were a few other issues as well that we recommended that the library director review further and come back. And of course, that's taken a backseat to reopening the library, understandably so. But there are some other issues there that I think there, there is some further work to be done on.
So this item is pending.
Yeah. Any other trustee questions on the organizational excellence section of this report on page twenty-eight and twenty-nine? If not, let's move on to the second section then, which is the digital strategy section, which is on page twenty-nine. And of course, we already talked about the RFID, but are there other questions on other items in the digital strategy section? And if not, moving on to item three, the learning and literacy programs, any clarification questions there on pages twenty-nine and thirty in the packet? If not, then moving on to item four, welcoming space for all on packet page thirty. And I might note that under item C in that section on the library renovation, there's a reference to the new state budget, including four hundred and thirty-nine million for public library infrastructure. And I checked with Inga earlier and the next sentence where it says with the maximum grant amount set at ten dollars per library, that actually is a typo and it should be ten million dollars per library. Other than that clarification, are there any, any other questions on this section? If not, I'm sorry.
Does trustee Teddy have a question?
Yes, I didn't see him, see it. Yes, go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, thank you. Actually, in that, I'm looking over here because I have a big screen where I have the agenda on another monitor. Back when we were concluding and receiving and discussing the feasibility study that we hired G4 to do, I, my recollection is that the board was very clear, based on some very, very good reasons that there were three of the possible renovations that G4 suggested in their report that we preferred and we ordered them in our, terms of what our preference was, and then second place, third place. And I'm looking at the report now. And then it also says, the board considers relocation to City Hall lot as a fallback. And I, I thought we were pretty, pretty strongly stating our opinions there that, you know, the, the three in order and then City Hall is a fallback. And that is really what we wanted to do. So I guess I want Inga to expand on the library renovation section here because it says that in March, you actually initiated a meeting with police and fire chiefs and that Anderson, Drelle Architects are involved. And that was the proposal that we quickly rejected because it was way overpriced when we were considering the feasibility study. So I guess I'm wondering why we're talking to them about something that doesn't read to me like one of our preferences.
So that's actually, thanks, thanks for the great question. So I think that's a misunderstanding. What we know is that the police department needs a new building. Their building was constructed in nineteen fifty-nine, I believe. And then also the fire station needs to be renovated as well. And we also know that there's some other departments that need significant renovations. And my concern, and, and this was something that one of the council members mentioned, is there needs to be a plan. The city should have a citywide plan for how they're going to address these different big projects. And so I thought if the police chief and the fire chief and I can all get on the same page talking about how we're going to move forward with renovations, then that will help us help lead to a plan on the city's part. So that we know, oh, maybe fire has some opportunity and they might go first. But anytime we talk about fire building being renovated or replaced, we'll be able to say, and next comes the library and next comes the police. So that's the type of plan that was talked about, not that we would merge that lot.
Yeah. So for, if I could add to that, for example, when, when we had some earlier discussions about this, there were a number of cities that actually had a, a general fund obligation bond ballot measure where they tried to get funding for several different projects, like a, a new library and a new fire station. And so they weren't necessarily co-located. It, it was more that they were co-funded. And so I think that's more the sense of this. I, I still, I, I think I agree with Bob that I think co-locating the library with the police and fire buildings, you know, is certainly not high on my priority list. It would be near the bottom, bottom of my list. And so I think we probably all agree with that. It's more a question of how are they funded and maybe what's the priority order in which, terms of which one is built first? And I know I had some concern that there was one item before the council where, where there was talking, there was some mention of the police building. And there was no reference to the library. And, and I think it's good to kind of keep them all coordinated and not have one department get way out in front of the other because it might have. get way out in front of the other because it might have more political support or, or whatever it might be. And try to have the city look at them as citywide priorities and come up with a citywide plan. So I think, I think that's the spirit of it. And Inga, could you speak to the other part of Bob's question related to the, um, the consulting firm, the Anderson Brulee and their role? I was a little surprised at that myself.
Sure. So they, they reached out, they seemed to reach out to me every six months or so and say, how's it going? You know, have you moved forward at all? We're working on this project, we're working on that project. And, um, they said, you know, we do strategic planning for cities and we'd love to talk to you some more about doing a strategic plan for, you know, what would that look like? What does that entail? And so I said, well, let's get our fire chief and police chief on a conversation with you to get an idea of what that kind of planning process, uh, would include. And then see if there's interest because, uh, as you said, Jim, what I'm really interested in is making sure that, you know, we, we stay coordinated in moving forward, um, with the building needs for the entire city. And we don't sort of run off out ahead. We don't get one department running out ahead and forget, you know, about the library's needs and vice versa.
Does that help answer your question, Bob, or do you want to pursue that further?
Yeah, uh, when I read this, I, I immediately thought co-locate. And, um, and, and I, and I, you know, double-checked my files and everything. And like you said, that is really toward the bottom of our preference list and maybe not even on the list. On the other hand, um, I have said before at city council meetings and some of those study sessions, that it is disturbing when the city considers police and fire essential, but does not consider the library as essential and in the same, uh, category of need. And, um, I want to mention, I believe, I assume that Inga sent the article from the, uh, research reported by the Brookings Institute to everybody. And as I replied to her, that had so much good information in it. It's almost, probably will motivate me to actually make some public comments to the city council as a member of the community, not as a trustee, of course. Emphasizing how essential the library is. And, and by keeping them aware of how important it is and at the same time talking about police and fire. You know, I, I think that will become very good. And I'm, I'm pleased to hear that, that, that that is what this paragraph was referring to, rather than saying, hey, I'm talking to police and fire about building a building together. Which is what my first impression was. And, but, but actually, continue to keep city council and city manager and finance department aware of how essential the library is relative and at the same level as police and fire. I, I think is wonderful. And so from that point of view, this sounds good to me.
Hey, good. Yes, Jennifer.
I was interested in the item about the state library offering grants. And I was wondering if you had information about whether it was just purely for new construction or if they also offered grants for renovations and improvements.
So we're waiting to hear more from the state librarian. But a survey was done of, um, libraries across the state to see how many libraries needed renovation, needed new construction and so forth. And they, they realized what an overwhelming, uh, issue it is. And so my understanding it's for renovation as well as new construction. But I don't know that for sure until we hear more from our state librarian. That's a great question.
Okay. Any other clarifying questions on item four?
Well, just to piggyback on what Jen, Jennifer said, um, so you're going to have to pull a team together to write a proposal? Or you don't know yet what the RFP is going to look like for this or, or they will?
Yeah, we don't know yet. So it's early days in the state budget.
Any other questions on this item? Then moving on to item or section four, section five, I should say, the balanced collections. Any questions for Inga on any of the items under balanced collections on packet pages 30 and 31? They're at 30, I'm sorry. If not, then before we get into any further trustee discussion, Francesca, could you see if there's any public comment on item eight?
Yes. If you would like to make a public comment, please raise your Zoom hand. Or if you are connected by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. There are no public comments.
Thank you, Francesca. So any other, um, any moving from questions to comments? Is there any discussion or comments on the, on Inga's quarterly report?
I just was wondering how long you think it'll take to get, to, to get rid of the backlog of 600 items with the staff that you have?
Well, we've, uh, we've been, um, we have now, uh, Phoebe is now 30 hours a week and she was 20 before. So that's a big improvement, um, thanks to the new budget. And then Peggy, uh, has been Langford, who's a children's librarian, has been helping out. And they've been, I think they've, having that, um, having two people working on it has kind of created an energy and, and they seem to have, uh, cataloged quite, quite a bit in this past month, I would say. So I don't have an estimate of how mu, how much longer it's, it's going to take. But, um, we have placed our first order with our new vendor for, uh, not only purchasing materials, but having them catalogued and processed. And we're waiting for them to come back to see what they're going to be like. And the goal is eventually that there's going to be very little that needs to be done once they've been taken out of the box and before they go out to the customers.
Very good. Any other, uh, comments or discussion on this item? If not, I'd just like to add that, um, while there are a few of these items that not a whole lot of progress has been made on, there are a lot of other items that a lot of progress has been made on. And particularly in terms of getting us ready to reopen next week. And so I just wanted to compliment Inga and the staff for, uh, all the progress that's been made with such a limited staff. Uh, it seems to me that she's made a lot of progress on this work plan and I appreciate it. If no other comments on that, uh, let's move on then to item number nine, which is the policy and process for the annual evaluation of the library director and, uh, approval of a proposed timeline. And Jennifer and I, as the chair and vice chair, had a brief discussion with Inga about this as she was preparing this item. So I'd like to ask Inga to start the, the overview of the item and then Jennifer and I will probably add in some additional comments.
So, um, just as a reminder that, uh, according to our library board policy, an annual evaluation of the library director, uh, needs to be conducted. And so typically before, uh, before that kicks off, according to policy 311, there are a number of steps that, that need to be taken. And so this is just a good opportunity to review those steps and, um, make sure you want to, um, do all the different things if they make sense, um, to do this, these different, uh, stages. And then, uh, so I've included the policy and, uh, suggested a timeline. And essentially there's the collecting, collecting responses, um, having the board, collect their, uh, responses and then, uh, giving the board an opportunity to discuss, um, things. And then of course, having a, a report prepared and then having a closed session where you deliver the evaluation to the director. And I should have mentioned, when you're collecting things, one of the important pieces is of course, that the director does the kind of self-evaluation and lists what accomplishments have been, have taken place during the past year or what things weren't accomplished and why. So that's sort of the outline of the process.
Good. Thank you very much, Inga. I, I had a few comments, but Jennifer, would you like to go first or shall I go first?
Yeah, I, I think the one noteworthy item on this under the discussion, uh, it was item two. When Jim and I met, given the situation and the fact that we have next to no staff, it didn't make a whole lot of sense to conduct a full-blown staff survey. So that was one thing, um, that we thought we would deviate from this time around just simply because it doesn't make sense for such a small number. It wouldn't really give us any meaningful information, but other than that.
Good. Good. Yes. In fact, we can, after we give a kind of an overview and have any questions and any public comment, then I'd like to try to get a consensus of the board on that particular item as well as the timeframe. And speaking of the timeframe, um, what we were suggesting is that, um, September 23rd, we would try to keep our regular meeting relatively short. And then probably after the, uh, regular meeting, have a discussion just among the trustees without the director. And then have a subsequent special meeting on October 21, where the only topic of that special meeting would be to, uh, review the evaluation with the director. And so that October 21 meeting, and I would suggest four o'clock probably, we'd want to come back and get the concurrence of the board that that date will meet, will work with everyone. And also I wanted to highlight that a part of the process we've used for several years now is to have the, um, the trustees complete a, a, a rating form. And my thought would be that, uh, I would send that out in early September and ask the trustees to respond by, uh, you know, well before that September 23rd meeting. So maybe by the middle of September. And then I would compile the, the summary of that and we would have that, uh, to, to review at our September 23rd close session meeting. So that's kind of the general timeframe that I had in mind. So before we get into discussion of this, is there any clarifying questions that anybody has before we go to public comment?
Um, I'm not sure if it's a clarifying question, but, um, I was thinking about getting input from staff. I, I totally agree that having a survey, maybe this is part of the discussion and I should postpone it till after the public comment?
Yeah, I think maybe so. If it's not a question, uh, I would encourage you to hold off.
Sure.
If there are no other questions, then Francesca, could you see if there's any public comment on this item, item number nine?
Yes. To make a public comment, please raise your Zoom hand. If you are connected by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. There are no public comments, Chair Thompson.
Thank you very much, Francesca. Then going back, Marcia, to your, uh, uh, comment or question.
Yeah, I, I was thinking about getting input that, um, rather than a survey, maybe, um, just a very general question to staff saying, is there anything you want to say? Encouraging them to, to, to say, you want to say, you want to either give, uh, uh, you know, site commendable things or, or suggestions for improvement or something without, without having a, a specific survey that might be helpful to Inga going forward. Just sort of a general, do you want to comment on, on?
As, as a confidential?
Yeah. As, as, um, as, um, also, uh, with colleagues also, I mean, the other city staff too.
Yeah, I, I should have mentioned that it would be my intent to, uh, ask the city manager's office. And I was thinking also of the, um, president of the Friends and Foundation, if they have any input, on the director's performance. How do others feel about, um, asking the, the limited staff that we have had for confidential comments? Bob?
Yes, I, I, I agree with Marcia. We should definitely have input from staff and maybe rather than a lengthy survey where there are check marks and, you know, one through nine or something like that on each item. For this unusual year, you and Jennifer could look at the, uh, topics that the staff was asked to respond to, but come up with maybe more of an open-ended and briefer, shorter, um, document. Or, or I don't want to call it a survey because it's a evaluation form, but, uh, different from what we've used before. Not to say we wouldn't return to the more metric and, and statistical one that we had or have had for many years, but, uh, look at kind of the, the same issues and rephrase them in ways that, uh, staff could confidentially and briefly answer, in a more open-ended way and, and make it shorter. But I think we absolutely need to have the staff input. I hadn't thought about soliciting input from the Friends and Foundation. Cause we had never asked for that before. And I don't know if, I mean, how would we pick? And this is something maybe for you and Jennifer to think about, but how would we pick who from Friends and Foundation or Fund Development would respond sort of from that, that area, uh, as opposed to just reg, regular staff and regular trustees? I don't think we want to ask everybody on the Friends board. And so I don't know.
On, on that particular item, I was just thinking of the president of the board who oversees the committees and, and the overall board of directors. So I wouldn't, I wasn't thinking of the entire board or anything like that. But certainly open to any other thoughts anyone has on that or on the employee survey. I, I, I think Marcia and Bob, uh, make good suggestions about how to do that. Jennifer, I see you're agreeing. Do we have a consensus that we want to take that approach? Looks like Arisha is okay with that as well. Okay, good.
I wanted to add something that I know that, um, at the meeting that Jim and I, Jim and Jennifer and I had, there was a concern that when you have so few people and people want to be candid, but they're concerned about anonymity. So I'm sure you'll figure out a, a way to do that. But I think that that was one of the concerns that had been mentioned by the two of you.
Yeah.
I should mention that that's a concern that we've heard from staff over the years, even when we had a much, you know, uh, more sort of detailed and specific, uh, staff survey. So, um, you know, even, even if we had full staff, it's not that many people. So I don't, I really am not sure other than, hey, trust us that we can, uh, you know, guarantee that, uh, and, you know, if they want to be really, really vague, then that's up to them if they're that worried about it. Or we might offer, um, you know, i- if they don't want to reply on paper because they think we could offer that if they wanted to have a personal sit-down with the, um, chair and, and or co-chair of the Board of Trustees, um, we could offer that to them.
Yeah, Jennifer.
Is, are there any online tools we could use similar to like a Survey Monkey or something where people could go ahead and respond or offer comments anonymously? And we could go ahead and correlate them from there?
That's what we've done in the past.
Yeah.
It's been Survey Monkey kind of stuff.
Yeah, we, we can look into various options. There's that. You, we could even have a locked suggestion box, you know, the old fashioned thing. Or we could perhaps get HR involved somehow to be a, to funnel, funnel them anonymously to the board or something like that. Jennifer, I couldn't, you're, you're muted. I couldn't hear your comment.
I was just watching Bob shake his head, no.
Okay, other, um, if, if nothing else on that particular part of the process, any comments about the timing, the September 1 for Inga to provide a report? And then I would do a, a, send out a rating to the, um, trustees, similar to what we've done in the past. And then have a closed session discussion on September 23rd. And another one, uh, with Inga on October 21. And again, that October 21 is a special meeting that's not currently on your calendar, probably. Any comments or concerns about any of those dates or that process? Marcia?
I just had a question about that. So, so before. I just had a question about, so before the trustees are doing their assignment, you will be able to funnel us back all the data so that you will, I'm assuming that that will be part of it, that you will, that we will have feedback available to us from whoever you're going to ask, right?
Correct, correct. Yeah, that we would get that to you before asking you to do the rating, right? Good, I'm glad you clarified that. Yes, good point. And does, does October 21 at four o'clock work for everybody in terms of the meeting time that we've suggested? If you had a chance to check your calendars? Looks like it's okay.
That's the meeting in September is shorten the regular meeting on September 23 and then move to closed session?
Yeah, that's what we're suggesting.
No, that's fine. Why aren't we doing that in October on the 28th?
Well, we were thinking that maybe one or the other of those two meetings might be best done as a standalone meeting, just to make sure we're not rushed. And we thought of those two, that probably the meeting with the director was the more important. And so we just wanted to make sure there was adequate time for a, you know, for an appropriate discussion and not feel rushed in any way. And for INGA not to be worried about anything else on the agenda.
And then we still have our regular meeting on the fourth Thursday and October the 28th.
Correct, which would be the week after that.
Yeah, right.
That's what we're suggesting, but again, we can really do it however the board would like to do it. If there's any concern about that approach, but that's what Jennifer and I came up with as a suggestion. Marcia indicates she's okay. Harish, are you okay?
I think I like the idea of a separate meeting on 21st.
Okay, and that works on your calendar?
Yes.
Bob? Bob? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I thought it was I wanted to talk. Sorry. Okay, good. So I think we have a consensus on?
I've talked enough.
So I think that covers everything that I thought we needed to get some consensus on. Is there any other, and we already asked for a public comment, I believe, did we not? Francesca, we already asked, right?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Okay, well, I think that's enough on that item then. Then moving right along to item 10, which is somewhat related, which is a draft calendar of board meetings. And we decided that this would be helpful to put together to help us keep track of what we're planning for various meetings along the year. Particularly, we have a lot of quarterly reports. We wanted to make sure we had an appropriate schedule for all these quarterly reports. And there are two particular things I wanted to highlight. One is, we normally don't have a meeting in November because it kind of overlaps with the Thanksgiving timeframe. And in the past, I believe the board has had a meeting the first Thursday in December. And we wanted to suggest a little different twist on that. In the past, sometimes when it's the first Thursday in December, it turns out that that's the week after Thanksgiving, which makes it hard to get the packet out, you know, on a Thursday, which is in fact Thanksgiving. So I think our suggestion would be that we have, as our norm, not the first Thursday in December for this special meeting at a different time, but rather two weeks after Thanksgiving. And in this case, that would be December 9. Whereas in the past, we would have done December 2 as the first Thursday of December. But again, that's only one week after Thanksgiving, which we think is somewhat problematic. So any, any comments about December 9? Is that a problem for anybody? Because the rest of the meetings are pretty much already on your calendar, hopefully. Everybody okay with that idea of December 9 or basically two weeks after Thanksgiving? Bob?
I agree with not having it on the second. I've always felt that by having this one meeting early in December, it feels like it's forever until the end of January, when we have the next regular meeting. And the following Thursday, December 16, right in the middle of December, would sort of split the difference a little more. And it is, well, nine days before Christmas. That's a Thursday, and it's a week from the following Saturday that is Christmas. So if that's not too close to Christmas or any other holidays, just so that we don't have such a big length of time between the one meeting in December and then the very end of January. If that's not a problem, I would propose the 16th. But yeah, definitely not the 2nd.
Okay, well, yeah, we can, we can talk about this. I think in the past, when there were a lot of seasonal parties, there was a desire, I think, in general around the city to try to not have board and commission meetings in the middle or later part of December. But during the pandemic, of course, there have been virtually no parties to speak of. There may be more this year, but I'm, I would be fine with either the 16th or the 9th. What's the pleasure of other trustees? Any comments?
Either works for me. I tend to agree that it does pack up, that people start having events and that there might be conflicts. I mean, even the city used to have a party around 15, 16, something like that.
Right. Yeah, I'd have, I'd have a very slight preference for keeping it on the 9th. But I, on the other hand, I understand Bob's comment too, that there is quite a time between early December and late January. INGA, did you have any observations about this question?
I think that the concern had been that people all go away during the holidays and, you know, school's out at a certain time for people with children and that sort of thing. We have so much of that to worry about right now, so either would work for me.
Marcia, did you have an additional comment? I couldn't quite tell. Harish, did you have a comment?
I'm neutral about that, so I'm okay. Either way. Especially since we're having these meetings by Zoom anyway, it doesn't really interupt so much.
Yeah, that may or may not be the case come December. We don't really know yet.
Okay, well then, we can think about that.
Yeah.
Get closer.
Well, I think Bob favored the 16th. Marcia, were you suggesting staying on the 9th?
Yeah, I think so.
I think I would lean towards staying on the 9th, although it's not a big deal to me. So let's hear the preferences of Jennifer and Harish to kind of try to come to as close to a consensus as we can.
My first choice would be leaving it on the 9th. Second choice, fallback would be the 16th, but the 9th would be good to get it over with.
Harish?
I mean, either day works, so I'll go with either way.
I think we have three slight preferences for the 9th and one, one maybe, I'm not sure how strong your preference is, Bob, but anyway, one preference for the 16th. Are you okay with the 9th if we, since we have several leaning in that direction, Bob? Okay, thank you. So let's leave the December meeting on December 9. And in future years, you know, we can certainly revisit that. But I think having it, avoiding having it a week after Thanksgiving, I think is one thing that I'd hope we would follow in the future because that just seems kind of unreasonable to have staff trying to put out the packet on Thanksgiving Day or the day before even. Let's see, what else? And we already talked about the October 21 special meeting at 4. And we did show a possible March 17, 2022 special meeting if it's needed for budget. So again, we thought it might be helpful for everyone to get these on their calendars, whether we need them or not, so that it'll be a little easier. Any other questions or comments on this proposed planning schedule? Or for that matter, what's on the various meetings tentatively? And I should emphasize tentatively because this is all subject to change depending on events. But this is kind of what seemed to make sense at this early planning stage.
I would just suggest one thing to keep in mind, which is, I think it's the last item on Packet Page 41, is to be thinking about having a study session or a retreat and what, what the board might want to focus on. And as we move along through the year, of course, things will come up. But if there's anything sort of really pressing that comes to mind, we might be wanting to think about that. And, you know, would we, what would we need, who would we need to have there?
Yeah, in fact, on that, does any trustees have any current thoughts about a a special meeting of that type, or a study session of that type, I should say? There, Bob, and then Jennifer?
I, I think it's possible that it would be useful, but I think we need to see how over the next six months, everything unfolds and the progress you make toward returning to some of the old ways and hopefully changing to some new ways as well. And so, yeah, I would leave it as a thought out there. I wanted to ask if on March 17, you have there possibly a special meeting? Since that's St. Patrick's Day, who is going to bring the green beer?
You.
I know someone that produces things of that nature.
Bring mojitos.
Yeah, right.
Jennifer, did you have a comment or a question?
Just one thing to keep in mind, depending on what we hear back from the state library, one thing that might be looming on the horizon is the potential of putting together grant application for funding.
Yeah, very good point, very good point, yeah. Okay, any, I guess we should ask if there's any public comment on this item, Francesca?
If you would like to make a public comment, please raise your Zoom hand. If you are connected by phone, dial star nine. And Chair Thompson, there are no public comments. However, one note, please, that there was a motion on item nine to approve the timeline that we didn't actually take.
I think we approved that by consensus. Does anybody feel like we need to go back and have a motion on that? I'll be glad to go back if anybody feels that way. Yeah, I think we're fine, but thank you very much for raising that question, Francesca. Excellent question. Thank you. Any other trustee comments on the draft planning schedule? Very good. Well, thank you very much for preparing this, INGA. I think this is helpful and I know it'll help Jennifer and I as chair and vice chair as we help you plan future meetings. Moving on then to informational reports and staff comments. Before we get to item 11, the financial report, INGA, are there any staff comments that you'd like to make as a verbal item?
So I did want to mention that we're still looking into what kind of meeting we might have starting in August, whether it's going to be virtual, hybrid, or something else. And I believe come September, the Governor Newsom might have rescinded the emergency order that enabled it to not be a Brown Act violation to have virtual meetings. So more to come on that. Likely an email will go out about what kind of meetings will hold in the future.
Good, thank you. So that likely will mean in-person meetings starting in September? Is that based on what the governor's action is?
Yeah, as my understanding of what the governor is planning at this point.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of legal issues involved in this with the Brown Act, as I understand it. So there probably will be more clarification of that as in the, in the future, I would imagine.
And then another thing that I thought of mentioning, which is that the Friends are planning to submit a request to be included in MC Gives, which is the annual fundraising campaign that MC Weekly helps coordinate, that usually runs in November and December. And as they're looking at a project and working with Mary Jane and I on the project, the project that we've identified or the theme we've identified is, and I might have mentioned this at our last meeting, but I'm pretty excited about it. It is supporting children, teenagers, and families in developing their social and emotional learning skills. And that's something that we're hearing a lot from educators that we know that kids have fallen behind on their academic skills and lost some things there. But in order to be prepared to be good learners, you have to have developed your social and emotional skills. And so there's a real concern amongst educators that kids have support around that and that families learn about how to help kids with their emotional and social skills. So that's, that's the theme that we're looking at for our MC Gives, would be funding to help the library be a strong support in helping kids and families. And we've reached out to the school district. They're very interested in working with us on this. And we've reached out to Ohana. They're interested in in possibly partnering with us as well. So you'll hear more about that as we move forward in that application.
Okay, very good. Thank you, INGA. Then let's move on to item number 11, the financial report. Is there anything you'd like to highlight, INGA, on the financial report?
Sure. So one thing I would like to point out is, if you look at Packet Page 43, under the expenditure balances for the general fund, which is about halfway down the page, you'll see that indeed we did go over by some $48,000 plus. And we're attributing that to the UAAL. So that's the unfunded actuarial liability. And that is because that was put into our budget without funding, corresponding with that budget. And that was just a new way that the city was handling those charges that they've had to handle for years. So in case people are concerned about that overage, it has been reported to the people that are working on city finances. So they're aware of it and aware of why that was the case.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. And just to clarify that a little further, as I understand it, for this current fiscal year that just started, FY 21 and FY 21, 22, that the unfunded liability numbers that created this problem were included and added to our budget, our general fund budget. Is that your understanding as well, INGA?
So I know when they were giving us our budget figures, they did add in those amounts to show what the total budget would be. Yes.
Very good. Other questions for INGA about the financial report? Seeing then, Francesca, could you see if there's any public comment?
If there is anyone here that would like to comment, please raise your Zoom hand or if you are connected by phone, dial star nine. And there are no callers at this time.
Thank you, Francesca. Any further discussion of this item? It's just to receive this report, so no action is required, but any comments are welcome. Seeing then, let's move on to item number 12, which is the statistical report. INGA, do you have any overview comments?
I do, which is that as part of the, something that happened last month was that David Kuhn's password was compromised on his computer and his computer was taken away. And then when he was given a loner computer, there was a, it happened again, so that computer was taken away or there was a virus activity or something. So anyway, so we had talked at the previous meeting about some changes and some pretty simple changes that were going to happen with the monthly reports. But because David kept losing access to technology, we weren't able to implement that. So we were going to make a change to what we were showing under public computer and internet usage on Packet Page 46. And we weren't able to implement that change yet. And then we were going to show you last year's numbers. We're going to attach those to this year, this year's, so that you'd have a comparison of a more normal year. And we weren't able to get that done either. So those changes are coming, and there were just some technology glitches that we had to get through.
Okay, good. Any other, any questions from trustees about the statistical report? Bob?
Yeah, well, it's not a question, it's a comment. I mean, in addition to my regular comment about how the attendance at adult programs is nowhere near down to the extent that the number of programs was down, down 44% year-to-year in terms of programs, but only down 10% in terms of attendance. So that really, again, reinforces how important and useful those are. But the additional thing that jumped out at me in this month's report But the additional thing that jumped out at me in this month's report is farther up, and that's where it talks about items checked out. And compared to last June, 26% more checked out in June of this year compared to June of last year. And so that means the staff and maybe we are doing something right. But I think that's remarkable that, you know, given the reduced, and all the additional hassle of the sidewalk checkout program and everything. I mean, this is just a fantastic statistic in my mind that, you know, despite everything, over 20, 26% more were checked out this past June compared to a year ago.
Yeah, if I could just, if I could just piggyback on Bob's comment and then you can comment, Inga. I was noticing that too, and then I was thinking that it's even more remarkable when you consider that in June of 20, we were one of the only libraries providing sidewalk service. PG wasn't. I don't believe the county was. I'm not sure all the, all the details. But we were one of the few that were providing service then. And now most of them are providing some service, which makes it even more remarkable that we're even higher now than we were last year. But Inga, go ahead.
Sure. So I would love to take the credit for that, all of the credit for that. And certainly it's true that we have amazing staff and they've been working very hard. And it's also true that we were the first library to open a curbside service in the county, but we didn't open until June 11th. And so we're not open a full month and.
So you want even more credit because it was only three weeks of the month, huh? Well, you got it from me and I think we ought to, that's the kind of thing that won't hurt to publicize.
Very good. Thank you, Bob. Any other comments or questions? And I, did I already ask for public input on this item? I can't remember. Francesca, can you help me?
No. For anyone that would like to make a public comment, please raise your Zoom hand or dial star 9. There are no public comments.
Thank you, Francesca. Any other discussion of the statistical report? If not, the last thing on our agenda is trustee comments. So let's start with trustee Joshi. Any comments tonight, this afternoon?
Looking forward to a trouble-free reopening. With the RFID working, we worked hard on it. And I'm really glad to see it happen.
Very good. Trustee Maura?
I was about to say the same thing. We're all looking forward to the day of opening and to see that building occupied and happy reading.
Very good. Trustee Petty?
I was going to say, let's make sure we have somebody taking pictures on that Tuesday morning, seriously. Because, you know, at 11 o'clock, especially on Tuesdays, because we're closed now on Mondays and Sundays. You know, it's not a gigantic line, but there are people waiting. And if we do a decent job at all getting the word out, I think there'll be a nice photo op for taking a photo of, you know, a long string of people waiting to get in that day. And that would, I don't know, call Mr. Taylor from the newspaper or somebody to drop by and bring a cameraman and so.
Very good, very good. Vice Chair Felbert?
Yeah, like the rest of you, I'm really excited about the reopening and curious how it's all going to work and hoping for the best. Since I don't live too far from Montecito Park, I may try and walk over on Saturday. Just pop in with my little digital camera, take some pictures and hang out.
Great.
Very good, very good. And I just have two comments, one to echo everything everybody said about hoping everything goes well. And if there's anything trustees can do to help, Inga, if anything comes up at the last minute you need help with, you've got, I think, five volunteers here that can spring into action, at least hopefully to some degree. And the second, I wanted to just formally announce that as Chair, I've appointed Harish to continue as the liaison advisor to the Friends and Foundation and Marcia as his alternate for the remainder of this current fiscal year. And I appreciate their willingness to do that. And also all of Harish's work related to the RFID Committee as well. Thank you, Harish. So if there's no other items to come before this meeting, I'll adjourn this meeting to our August Library Board meeting. Thank you all very much and have a good night.